This is a regular meeting, a public meeting, not a public hearing. There is copies of the agenda, or there are copies of the agenda on the table to the right. We do not have with us our normal, our regular recording secretary is, who is Barb Hines, who is Executive Assistant to the First Selectman. Barbara's mother passed away on Sunday, October 28th, up in Latham, New York, and she is at her funeral today. So, I'd like to just say on behalf of our board, and I know each of us have expressed individually, but the greater Greenwich Town Hall community, our thoughts are with Barbara today as she honors the life that her mother lived. Eighty-nine years, very special, and we wish Barbara well. Also want to acknowledge another passing, and that is Don Conway, who is the man who is behind Greenwich Community Television filming today's meeting. He is with us today in the room behind the cabinet, and he just lost his wife as well, who he cared for so lovingly and with such devotion, and we wish, you know, Don our condolences and support at this difficult time. And, Don, we offer our condolences and thank you for being with us today. That's really kind of you to be here under such circumstances. I also wanted to reaffirm a statement that this board issued over the weekend, and I want to express my gratitude to Sandy for putting together what I think was a very thoughtful and powerful statement, and I must compliment you. You have a way with words that I admire. You say it well. So, this is, this is in response to the horrific tragedy that occurred on Saturday, for which I think all of us are still trying to wrap our heads around as to such hate can occur in our country today. It reads, "Our hearts and prayers are with the families of those attacked, as well as the entire Pittsburgh community. We condemn the murderous act and the hatred that inspired it. Greenwich is, and will continue to be, a community where we celebrate our diversity, in which we will not accept or condone rhetoric or conduct which seeks to diminish or attack anyone because of their race, creed, national origin, or because of how they choose to worship. We are committed to civil discourse and respect for our residents." I think it is extremely important, and again, thank you, and thank you, John, that we, as the leadership board of the town, continue to affirm the guiding principles that not only we live our individual lives by, but as this town stands for. And I will tell you that I received several responses to that from my friends in the Jewish community who are part of the various houses of worship. I also want to applaud and thank the Greenwich Police Department, the men and women who did step up without being asked to provide increased surveillance in and around those houses of worship, who had services or activities on Sunday, particularly those downtown at Habad. Received gratitude and thanks from Rabbi Darren. In going forward, there will be two different services Friday evening here in Greenwich. I believe one begins at six or 6:30 at Greenwich Reform Synagogue, and the other at Temple Shalom, and they are services of solidarity, and solidarity with not only the Pittsburgh Jewish community, but solidarity in standing up against hatred, antisemitism, and the rhetoric and activity that drives it. So, I just want to, again, express our strength in unity, and I think that's the most important thing we've shown here, is that we're united.
I obviously could not agree more, Peter, and not to take away one iota from the antisemitic nature of the attack and the scourge of antisemitism. Remember, too, that this person was filled with hatred generally, and talked about immigrants and immigration. Ours is, as Peter said, a diverse community. People have immigrated to this country, and have come to Greenwich, and lived here, and added to Greenwich. They are the soul of Greenwich. And so, it's not just Jews, and it's not just antisemitism. It's a, it's an attack upon people that are different. And yet, at the same time, we all say, "Our difference is what makes us great." We really have to remember that. We really have to work at that. It is not just about antisemitism, while that's terribly, terribly, terribly important. It is about us. It is about immigration. It is about the diversity that we want. You can't chase it away and say you want it at the same time. And we do want it, and we will not chase it away.
Item two on our agenda typically is approval of minutes, but due to Ms. Hines' unfortunate circumstances, she was not able to complete those from our last meeting, so we will take them up at our next meeting, which actually is not until December 6th, unless a special meeting is called, and I only anticipate that to occur if, in fact, we were to have any nominations to be made related to planning and zoning, and specifically to meet a deadline for the RTM call in December. That is, if we choose to want to act so that the RTM has a nominee before them in December. And I believe that date may be November 16th to get on the December call. So, we'll talk about that further in appointments, but our next meeting is not after this one, is not until December 6th. In terms of updates, just briefly transitioning into some of the activities that occurred over the last several weeks, in following on what Sandy has said about the breadth of the message in terms of applying to a broader population. One of the things I had an opportunity to do this week was to issue a State of the Town, and I'm not going to go through every element of it, but one of the most important parts of it is something I've said, and I think we've all said before, that our strength as a community, and our success as a community, is directly attributable to the active engagement of our citizens. And I say "active engagement," I mean not just within our government, but in non-government organizations, human service organizations, houses of worship. People desiring to contribute their time, talent, and treasure to make sure that the community prospers and that others are cared for. And I think that's the overwhelming strength of our town, and why I have professed that it's strong, because we do have active engagement. And I highlighted some of the examples, and I think last year's surge of people getting involved with town meeting and government is emblematic of that. So, that was one of the overarching themes, and as long as we can continue that in the way that we've described, with a civil way, I think we will set an example for others. We concluded on Sunday, the first Experience Greenwich Week. Again, I want to thank John and Sandy for attending. We together went to an event at Isabella Garucho Gallery, which is downtown here, met some new people I had not met before, but realized that we have an abundance of art and culture in our town that often goes overlooked, either because I don't make the time, or haven't had an opportunity, but it was well-executed. I want to thank those involved, and look forward to hearing some of the feedback from folks. I've gotten some. Also, a very, very powerful event in just its focus and mission, and one that's personal to me due to family circumstances. But on Tuesday, I had the opportunity to attend the Breast Cancer Alliance's annual luncheon and fashion show. And underneath all of the program is what their mission is in terms of raising critical dollars to provide fellowships to researchers to address the various forms of this insidious disease that I believe has touched just about every family. And when I, when I walked in there, and it was well underway, you just look at the sheer number of people, predominantly women, who commit themselves each year to come forward, support the event. Many of them who have been afflicted step up to be models, which I think, you know, is not an easy thing to do, having been part of this, watching it, and having, you know, women who are close to me afflicted with this. So, I just say that, again, giving, giving example to what I mean when the strength of our community is our people, that's, that's a strength right there. I mean, imagine, they're one of the leading fundraisers for breast cancer research in the country, and they're making a difference because they're applying the money to the necessary scientific research, which gets them on the, on the National Institutes of Health radar and pushes it. So, again, I applaud all those involved with that. It was, again, a very successful event. We also received word, and I'm happy to see our beloved police chief here, Jim Heavey, that safehome.org has rated Greenwich as the safest community in the nation. This is something that they do a survey and look at particular data points to arrive at that. This is in no part attributable to the leadership of that department under the chief, and the men and women who have joined the ranks, for which I'm always impressed at the skill and caliber that they come to the position with some advanced degrees. So, we have a talented force, and one that's keeping us safe, and kudos to them. Thank you. I believe that concludes what has taken place. Just a couple things, since we're not going to meet for a month, that will be occurring over the next few weeks, and that is, the Boys and Girls Club of Greenwich, each year holds a Thanksgiving feast for their members, the club kids. This year, it's on Tuesday, November 20th. They anticipate 350 members and staff to attend, and they're always looking for volunteer servers. And so, I've had the opportunity to do this a couple of years, but it's November 20th, and it is, begins at 4:00 PM. And if you haven't been to the Boys and Girls Club, it's a real treat to see, talk about direct impact of service, what the men and women at that organization do for some of our needyest or deserving kids. So, that's coming up. And then, of course, the Fellowship of Clergy has their annual proclamation of Thanksgiving on Thanksgiving Day at 9:00 AM at St. Catherine's, and one of us, I think, will be there in some way, shape, or form. We'll figure that out later on. That concludes the updates that I have. In terms of events, I just want to also communicate that, as it relates to specific issue, Town Administrator Ben Branyan and Senior Management Analyst Blaze Levitan have been working diligently to put together the information that was requested or supported in the sense of the meeting resolution that passed the RTM as it relates to the Northwest Fire Station. Significant amount of outreach is occurring on many levels. One was, we did have a meeting with the RTM committee chairs, who committees oversee review of allocations for life safety. We also included the BET. The purpose of the meeting was to solicit questions that they may have from their membership, and to bring them back to our office, to Ben and Blaze, so that proper responses can be provided. In addition, there's been outreach to a number of property owners within a geographic area that is considered to be suitable. That is underway. We're getting calls back to the letters that were sent out. I believe there are well over two dozen. And I, myself, have had conversations with institutions who have stepped up or expressed interest and consider their, their options. So, a lot of activity taking place sort of behind the scenes with some very technically proficient folks, Ben, thank you, and Blaze, and as well as, not to understate, the fire administration and GIS, who maps for us with data, we're very thankful to them as well. That concludes my updates. Item number three was on our agenda before and wasn't ready for primetime, or we had a scheduling issue, if I recall, but we are having an update on Hillside Road's Working Group report. This was put together in concert with residents within the community surrounding Hillside, or not Hillside, as well as the various organizations, schools, public safety police, and town administration. So, Mr. Branyan, if you'd come forward.
Good morning, everyone. I have, from the working group, we have several people that joined us today. On my left, we have this Director of Safety and Security, Tom Bobkowski, from the schools, Neighborhood Representative, Elizabeth Dempsey, and the Chief of Police. And then, on my right, Sergeant Smythe was also on the, the working group. I think I hit everybody. Also, this morning, I believe the Board of Selectmen received a letter written jointly by the both, two of the three neighborhood representatives, Ashley Cole and Elizabeth Dempsey, just expressing their thoughts on the current status. The memo that was dated October 23rd, I think, as the First Selectman already mentioned, this item was originally on the October 25th Board of Selectmen. Since that meeting was canceled, we're talking about the item today. In the June 27th meeting, the report to the Board of Selectmen was presented with recommendations and status of noncompliance on P and Z conditions. At that meeting, the board requested an update at their October 25th meeting, so that's why we're on the agenda today. I think the updates are relatively self-explanatory. I just wanted to make one verbal comment, which I made in the cover memo, that recommendation number nine, just that deliverable is falling behind schedule. And just to remind people that number nine is regarding the traffic consultant study that the school system needs to procure. That's a critical recommendation. I think that's mentioned in the neighborhood letter as well. Several of the recommendations rely on that, but we are actively working with the school district to get that status back on track. It's my understanding that they're in the process of figuring, figuring out a funding strategy to hire the consultant.
Is that the problem? When you say it's falling behind, it's a money issue?
I believe so, yeah.
Have they found the money?
They are, I just, I just spoke with this, Tom Bobkowski this morning. They, it's at cabinet now, and they're looking through their budget, how they can, I'll say, put various funding lines together to pay for it.
When are they going to have that decided for you?
I, I hope soon. I asked the same question that you're asking me.
I'm asking the question to help you out.
No, I know you are. I know you are. And that's where Tom mentioned that it's at cabinet level now, so they've been asked to review their budgets for potential budget savings to put the contract together.
How much, I'm just curious, how much money are we talking about in terms of the scope that is being requested? I mean, do you have an initial sense?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
The initial scope came in at over $125,000. There was scope creep on it. In working along with the stadium, Cardinal Stadium project, we were able to reduce it down to $73,700, and that's what the cabinet is working on now to find funding for the $73,700 to do the study.
So, it goes beyond this, I'll call it, narrow issue that Ben's dealing with. It also is encompassing Cardinal?
No. What we want to do is remove Cardinal Stadium from, it's, we're using the same traffic consultant company, and they were, they originally lumped the two of them together. We had to remove it, and then sharpen the scope to make sure it covered the points that were covered by the Hillside Committee. So, it went back and forth three times. It's now the third time. It's, seems to be on point, and this is what the cabinet is looking at today.
Was it competitively bid?
It's, no. We already had a traffic consultant for Cardinal Stadium and Greenwich Public Schools, so they put it out to the same company, since they're all going to work together with the construction projects.
Okay. I only ask the question because to this uninitiated, uneducated-on-this-point person, that just sounds like a heck of a lot of money, $73,000 for this job. I mean...
Well, looking at the amount...
I have no basis to say that. It just feels like it's very high.
We went with the scope of what the study was looking for, and that was presented to the consultants. And the scope of the job is what they needed for the amount of traffic that needed to be studied. Not just Hillside Road, but the feeder roads, and parking lot monitoring, road monitoring, traffic concerns, and along those lines. It was the entire scope of the whole project.
Happy to answer any other questions on, on the updates presented, but I think the cover memo and the conversation we just had is the, is the central point on the recommendations. Other progress has, has been made. I think one that had the biggest impact was recommendation number 18. That was discussed during the group. That was about the rental activities where potentially having interference with both high school and park and rec activity. And the school system was able to work with the Trinity Church to move their service away from the high school, which helps traffic congestion. But again, the main point is getting the traffic consultant on board.
Yes, and if I can, at the risk of beating a dead horse, but it's important, otherwise this is never going to happen. And maybe I'm addressing this question as much to Peter as to you, but let me just ask, let's suppose, or let me try it differently, to get this money, what if the Board of Education just says, "We just don't have it. We just don't have the money in the budget. We just can't do it." Where do we find the money? Is this a BET issue?
Yeah, an application would have to be submitted BET for interim.
Would we be the ones that submit it? Is Ben the one that submits it? Is the GHS the ones that submit it? Who does this?
The, the public schools would, the district would. It's clearly in their, when we purposely designed the recommendations to make sure there was no ambiguity in who's responsible for certain recommendations, that's why we organize it the way we did by district, public works, and when there's joint, there's joint. But this is clearly going back to the P and Z conditions. So, back in December 28, 2010, P and Z approved the site plan for MISA, were certain conditions, and one of them was the traffic consultant study needed to be updated for the next three years. Using that, that was the, the entry point into, well, we have these other issues that were not discussed in 2010, particularly with the school start time and other changes. And several recommendations were made during the working group to say, "Well, what about this? What about this?" There was consensus, but also disagreement on whether or not we needed to wait for the consultant, or should make changes to the circulation. Now, the consensus at the group was, "Well, let's wait for the consultant to make a comprehensive review of the whole site." But clearly, the long answer to your question is the responsibilities with the school district for funding.
I guess the reason I'm pushing, and let me be clear, you've done a terrific job. The group has done a terrific job. This is not in any, even in the slightest sense, criticism. But the reason I'm pushing is, this is one of those things that, in my experience, unless everybody's feeling pressure, it is just too easy for it to slide and not get done in a timely fashion. And so, what I am pressing you on is, what can we do as a board to help you get this done? What can we do to make sure that the public schools and the Board of Education, if that's what it is, moves forward in a prompt manner? This is just too easy, and it's, we've kicked it around for a while. You guys have been working hard at it, but we've got to bring this to a close.
No, I totally agree with you, and I think you were one of the main proponents of an update for the October 25th, for the exact reason you're citing right now, is a lack, lack of a timeline or a due date. It can easily get lost. There's several hours, I would easily say over several, over hundreds of hours put in on the working group and the work. And I say, from a sense of urgency standpoint, as if you wanted to schedule another update on this, on this particular issue for a future Board of Selectmen meeting, certainly will be open to that. We're, I'm having a good conversation with, with Tom Bobkowski. He's, he's doing what he can. I, I think Pierre and I can certainly have conversations with other leadership at the...
I guess I would urge you to continue doing what you're doing, do more of it, and I would like to get an update unless you have...
I would, I would agree that we keep it on, we keep this open matter on the agenda until we get the resolution, which is the actual contracting to have the traffic study done. That keeps the spotlight on it.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we have the focus and back you up in trying to get it done.
I appreciate that.
Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We had another item on our agenda from the 25th that was, the meeting was canceled and directed to this meeting. It's under new business, and that is two, two road closures. The first one relates to the Veterans Day walk that has occurred the past several years. This takes place between Amagerone Crossway off of Greenwich Avenue down to Havemeyer Place. It is on Sunday, November 11th. I believe it's Sunday this year, which it's usually before 11:00, because the service is 11:11 at 11:00. So, perhaps Sergeant Smythe, you can share with us a little bit more of the details, but it's pretty much contained to those blocks that are...
Correct. And we open up Greenwich Avenue as we go past the intersections that we do. The ones behind us then open up, so we don't keep the whole avenue closed off the whole time. They gather at 9:45, and by usually 10:15-ish, the road is back open completely. So, we start off at Amagerone, go all the way down Greenwich Avenue, and as we pass Elm, Lewis, et cetera, we open up the roadway again.
Great, okay. I mean, I don't have any questions, because it's been pretty much routine that, do you guys have any? So, I make a motion to approve the road closure request as presented for Veterans Day Observations.
Second.
With that objection. The second item comes to us, again, another event that occurs in old Greenwich. It's on a Saturday evening, December 1st, and they call it First Light Festival, and this is something that Richard Fulton, in his peers, who are merchants in the area, host. They were not able to be with us today. They were able to be with us on the 25th. I told them not to worry. I don't think there's anything new that he could tell us that isn't already in the record. If you just, just want to comment, it's a relatively contained event to...
Correct. To old Greenwich, the, the central area down there. It's an event that occurs regularly, and he has already contacted our traffic section with regards to their special event permit and the procedure of how they're going. So, there's nothing new in that from last year to this year. It's the exact same event going on.
Great. So, is there a motion to approve that as presented?
Move.
With that objection. And thank you, Sergeant Smythe, for your attendance today. And Chief Heavey, thank you for your attendance today. The next item is appointments and nominations. While we don't have any specific ones today, we are going to be, going into executive session to interview candidates for Planning and Zoning Commission. I do want to make a statement, and I'm sure my colleagues would like to join me, and that is, I should have said so at the outset. Coming back to the original theme, you know, we're strong as a community because of the people who step up to volunteer their time and engage actively in civic affairs. As we know, Richard Maitland, who presently has served as the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, was not reappointed by the RTM to continue his service. Mr. Maitland, a professional architect, served for 18 years. One cannot even begin to quantify the hours that he put into his role on that commission, the level of detail, the, the site visits, the evenings. We do have a process. The process carried forth with our unanimous support for him, but the RTM had, through their action, expressed to go a different way. And so, I just want to take a moment with my colleagues. I think we share this overwhelmingly, to thank Richard Maitland for his service to our town. Wish him well in his future here, and again, gratitude to him for the commitment he made for 18 years. to him for the commitment he made for 18 years and respect that I have for him, and I think we all do. And I want to thank you, Sandy, for your very eloquent remarks in support of him at the meeting. I thought it was, could not be said better, what you said, and I thank you for that.
Well, thank you. Obviously, I, and I'm sure John, joined your statements about Mr. Maitland. Obviously, I'm sorry that my words weren't enough to carry the day, but somebody said to me, and there is truth to it, that if you have that kind of unrest or concern in the community, we should hear it, and we should pay attention to it. And despite my words and despite my beliefs that Richard deserved to be renominated and to serve, the fact is that there are too many people who had concerns, and we have to address those and be mindful of them.
Okay. So, at this time, it entertained a motion to go into executive session for specifically item B, which is interview candidates for Planning and Zoning Commission. I will say, just so you know, in the process, we are going through a process where we're going to interview any and all of those who are interested. We are beginning with the alternates, as has been the custom, but that does not mean we are not going to hear from other people as well. I believe...
So you will not be making any decisions then?
No, I don't. And again, I was trying to share with you the calendar, and that's something we have to discuss based upon seeing all the people who are interested. If we're trying to do this by December, it's narrow. If we want to carry forward to January, it gives us a little bit more latitude. I imagine we may, you know, have half dozen or so candidates, but it's still, people's interests are just coming forward. We've gotten, I think, one or two people who've said they'd like to talk with us and be considered. To Sandy's point, we're going to listen to what people have to tell us as to their issues and concerns.
Question. What's the timeline on when we hand over the appointment to the RTM?
I believe, going on recollection, 90 days, but we should verify that.
When does that 90 days start?
When was that meeting? October 19? Let me think about this.
So we go Monday?
Yeah.
When did Richard's term...
That's the 15th.
The 15th.
When did Richard's term end yesterday? No, it ended technically this week, probably?
Yeah, it ended, yes, it ended this week.
Technically, members continue to serve until replaced. I know that with P and Z, there's an issue with sitting in an application for which you may not be able to see it through to completion and then not having adequacy of a vote. So I know that he may have just said, "I'm going to see," so that leaves them with four regulars and the three alternates. But John, I'll get a more definitive read, but I believe it's 90 days from the date of the expiration of the term.
Do we have 90 days to recommend someone? Is that a good question?
Then it goes to the RTM appointments committee.
Right. Okay, so do we have a motion? 10:44. Okay, this is a resumption of the regular Board of Selectmen meeting of November 1st, 2018. An executive session be reviewed with outside counsel, several worker comp claims, and we have prepared for purposes of a settlement, the following approvals. The first item is related to a part-time food service worker for the Board of Education, and those claim numbers, there are three, due to injuries from 2003, '12, '15, and 2016. Claims 0570209792, 0085542, 0117334, and 0130142. Attorney Porter recommends a full and final settlement of $4,500.
So moved.
With that objection. The next item pertains to a professional assistant, paraprofessional in our schools. This is one claim for injury in March of 2018. Number is 0150864, and Attorney Porter recommends a full and final settlement of $15,000. With that objection. The next one is for several claims. This involves a former laborer in our Parks Department. The injury dates were '09, 2010, '12, '13, and '15. One claim, 0121236, and that Attorney Porter recommends a full and final settlement of $18,000.
So moved.
With that objection. The final claim is for injury of retired building maintenance mechanic. This occurred in July of 2013 and January of 2018. Claims 0142982 and claims 0149545, and Attorney Porter recommends a full and final settlement of $75,000. With that objection. That concludes the four worker comp claims. There are two property tax settlements we have with us, Assistant Town Attorney Gene McLaughlin. The first one is docket number FST CB 17-6032116S, parcel number 02-1300S. Should the plaintiffs prevailed at a trial based on their appraisal, they would have been entitled to a refund of approximately $18,574. But as a result of the reduction in assessment that will be taken as part of the settlement, a credit of approximately $5,324 against future tax payments will be allotted. That's again...
So moved, sir.
Okay, with that objection. And finally, the last item before us in settlement is docket number FST CB 166029135S, parcel number 10-3067. This is a credit to the owner of approximately $19,070 against future tax payments. Had the plaintiff prevailed at trial based on their appraisal, they would have been entitled to a cash refund of approximately $61,180. With that objection. That concludes the business before the meeting today. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen is on Thursday, December 6. It is possible there will be a special meeting on a matter to address appointments or nominations to the Planning and Zoning. No other business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
12:20.